Call meeting to word.
Coffee?
Here.
Kelly?
Here.
McKinley?
Yes.
Testory?
Here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have one public comment, and you want to go ahead and do this?
Yeah, I can.
Terry, why don't you come on up, and we'll kind of roll through this, and what you've got here.
Okay, I'm asking council this evening to consider your ordinance now says between Clinton Avenue and Market Street, no residents on the first floor. I'm asking that you change at the Green Street instead of Market.
Okay, and can I ask why?
We've already got residents on that block of Green Street, or on Main Street now, which is grandfathered in, but to keep my buildings up and going, I've got to have the ability to rent. I've got one that does not meet city standards as far as how much space off of Main Street. If I lose that income, my buildings, I'll have to disclose the building down. If you compare my buildings against even the city's properties, my buildings will stand out as being well cared for, yours won't. But without the income, I can't keep them up. You know, I've got space available for commercial units, but there hasn't been anybody even close to interested.
Have you advertised for like, commercial businesses?
Yes, I have.
You have?
I had two or three small individual people wanted to make up, use one of the buildings for retail. They couldn't even afford the utilities. What we get right now is what we get, nothing.
What are the addresses on these, Terry?
118.
118 Green, or Main?
No, Main. I've got properties on 118, 117, 111.
Which one are you talking about doing the street level though? 118 Main?
Yes.
And that's the one that's right on the corner of KNS?
Yeah.
And it's not an apartment right now, or is it?
Yeah, the front part of it's still my, technically my office, but they're using it as an emergency exit from the apartment.
So you can access that through the apartments that are upstairs?
Yeah, downstairs.
Oh, so there is apartments downstairs already?
Yeah.
So we're talking about the buildings on the south side of the street?
You mean the west side?
West side. West side.
But if we just move our parameter from Market Street to Green Street, we're going to solve all the issues at once. Even the city is using the police department and their part-time on-call officers stay here. You've got a shower and a bathroom, you've got a kitchenette, and they have a bed back there. So you're breaking the same rules I am.
So you're proposing making the bottom floor an apartment instead of storefront?
No, I still want to keep as much of a storefront as possible, and hopefully you guys are going to make the world better here, and people will want to come do business again. I purposely kept 117, which is across the street. I purposely kept that open and have not worked on the bottom floor, just for the fact that if we ever get a retail person, there's only, well, the Knights of Pitya's building, and I think Willard's got that kind of sewn up as warehouse and mine. So you have very little property that's available for rent for commercial resident, or commercial use. I intend to keep it that way as long as I can, but I understand that it's only for to do it so long. So I'm asking you to help me, so we keep the buildings in decent shape. Anything that I've done on the first floor can be undone pretty fast and opened back up retail, but I suggest no retail I can.
I guess my concern with this is if we do this, then, you know, you've got the building across the street, and you're going to try to do that also?
Like make it residential?
Make it residential.
At 117, instead of commercial space?
I hope not to.
But it's not completely off the table?
It can't be.
Yeah, he just said it wasn't off the table.
You know, my first goal is to protect those buildings, or even end up with something like over across the street. It takes a lot of money to keep these old buildings going, and again, Willard can verify that one. And I, you know, I've got about half a million bucks invested in town with the different properties. So I'm here, I want to stay, and I sure would like to see the business come back.
Any other comments for him? No? Well, Terry, we'll look at it, you know, I can't guarantee anything, but we'll take a look at it.
Okay. You know, the day it's going to come, your gun business is going to need a commercial address instead of a residential, so I've got nice for you.
Terry, thank you.
Thanks, Terry.
Okay, section one will be the consent agenda.
Making motion to approve the consent agenda.
Call it.
Second.
Call it.
Coffee? Kelly?
Yes.
McKinley?
Yes.
Testory?
Yes.
Motion, Kelly.
Section two is unfinished business ordinance resolution previously tabled.
Making motion to approve the waive the bid process and the wealth limitry.
Discussion.
We discussed this a bit last time, the only additional information I have is that it costs us over a thousand dollars to do the bid on the areas, it was eight hundred and something with the engineers and $233 just for the ad. Again, in this situation, I don't feel that we're, who goes to bid out? I think you're going to end up with BHMBG and maybe one other, and we're going to go with BHMBG because they have the similar parts and knowledge, but I'll leave it up to you.
I'm okay with that, if there are ones that have done the prior work on that.
There's a, is there a rule that you have to bid out over 26,000?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five?
That's why I'm asking for approval to waive the bids as a sole source bidder, because the statute is sole source bidder or emergency. You know, I would tell you the statute also talks about sanitary districts not even having to go through the bid process because of the need to get this kinds of equipment, that's my general summation. But, you were saying?
I was just going to say, actually, there's an exception for, the bid process can be simply waived, even if it's not sole source, even if it's not emergency, with three quarters vote of the council, actually. So it's entirely appropriate that the council consider this, if that's what you want to do.
And for my purposes, my argument is, this, you know, I try to stick to the first two. You know, I try not to ask to waive the bids, because I, you know, I think it is good to do like thing, or to do with the way the statute writes, but that's also one to put in the legal process is for special situations. But that's...
This is like the phase three of like, the one and two phase of the article?
Yeah, we already did two, this was, the other two we'll talk. Because right now, we have to manually go over there, and the EPA wants us to run those four wells at separate times, rotate them frequently, and we haven't been doing it as frequently because you have to manually turn them, this will allow them to be turned off and on, just like the other two, by...
On the...
On the...
The first one, this was $90,000?
Uh, yes. I believe that, it was just over, yeah, 91,000. A bunch of 100.
And the company, it was the same company that did the first two, correct?
Yes.
If I could just have a parliamentary procedure, I don't believe that this was actually formally tabled at the last meeting, is that right? Am I wrong about that? Because if it was formally tabled, there does need to be a motion to bring it back from table.
It was formally tabled, we had a vote to table it.
We just discussed it.
Discussed it and moved it to this agenda, okay, I just want to make that clear, that so it's not, it was not previously tabled, okay, thank you.
Anybody have anything else on this? Want to vote on it tonight, correct?
Yes.
In motion to vote.
That's correct.
There was a motion by Testory, and second.
You want to call it?
Kelly?
Yes.
McKinley?
Yes.
Testory?
No.
Coffee?
Yes.
Motion, Terry.
Making motion to approve the resolution 2018 to X10 firearms rights resolution.
Second. Discussion.
We discussed this last time, this is really a superficial thing that we're just, we're making a statement publicly that we won't intrude on people's rights anymore than the state requires us to.
Sure.
There are bills out there, a fellow named Don Harmon is pushing one, claims to have heard the people speaking, and it's going to reduce the bureaucracy by making a smaller bill, but he's still pushing for the same restrictions, so... I just thought this was something that we could speak on, and it doesn't cost us anything.
Anybody got anything on this? Or a lot of the counties that are out there doing it?
We would be the first city to do it.
Yeah. Call it.
McKinley?
Yes.
Testory?
Yes.
Coffee?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Motion, Kelly.
Section three, any new business ordinance resolutions for initial consideration?
Making motion, discussion regarding a net metering policy.
Yeah, I'm going to make a motion.
Okay, I'm going to...
I'm going to hand out a business card, the gentleman here, Mike Genna with IMEA. What a net metering policy is, is it allows for individuals, whether their residence is industrial, commercial, to set up utilities such as a motor door, that allows them to hook into the municipal power and either get a credit, you know, on their bill, or if they generate more than what they use, to have us, you know, give them recognition of credit or bank it, you know, for future credit. Several cities within the IMEA group have already passed this policy. We did have it on their books, so now we've been approached by a resident who wants to create a solar array and hook into our system. So this is standard boilerplate language that IMEA created after a lot of work. It's also loosely based on a net metering policy that AMRAH has currently and uses. So there's several things to talk about, one is the policy, the other is the credit rate. So for example, let's say, I'm just making up numbers, let's say a house generates 100 kilowatts, and the solar array creates 50 of that, then they would be billed, you know, like normal for the 50, and then they get a credit for the other 50 at the rate that they would be billed. But let's say the house generates 100, and they create 500, we would have a choice in our policy. We have to decide what kind of policy, whether, you know, to have them bank it, you know, that they get credit for that, and it would accumulate over like a year, like you have a year to use it, you know, sometime in the future, or it goes away like after a year.
You don't physically write them a check?
No, no.
Okay.
It would be a credit on their account.
I've got a friend that's on an array, and that's how theirs, he told me theirs works, so they just get credit, they don't get a check.
Correct, it's just at what rate, and I got a couple examples during your packet. One is from the city of Freeburg, one is from the city of, I don't remember which city it was.
Breeze, I thought.
Breeze, yes.
Breeze, Breeze.
And so my recommendation, I talked to Mike, would be Freeburg. What they do is, was the avoided cost is what we're billed by IMEA for the power. It's kind of like your gross cost, does that make sense? You know, because we have so much written into our rate, you know, your staff cost, your operating cost, your, you know, your infrastructure cost, all that is rolled into our rate, but we pay a lesser rate for the actual raw power, that that is a much lower amount, so that that's what you would be credited with, is that lower amount. I'm going to let Mike kind of help me here, because I've just tried to give you a general overview, but I know that he can fill in many, many blanks for me, as I'm on the steep learning curve myself. But Mike, if I kind of explained it already?
Yeah, yes, thank you, Steve, thank you, Mayor of the City Council. Essentially, what the city, by putting together a net metering policy, is you're outlining everything so that there's no surprises for the city, there's no surprises to the citizens who are part of the array, there's no surprises that people put up their array. And that bringing policy, it outlines basically the responsibilities of all the parties. So it basically says the people who are building the array have to put up an array that's sized to their, what their usage is, so if you're using 3 KW, you don't put 100 KW, have them sell back to the city and try and make money on it.
Sure.
It's a self-supply, you don't want them to become a utility. You also want to make sure that the array is done in a safe manner, so that if you have a fireman who's upon the roof, there's not going to be an accident, or you get four firemen, all of a sudden the roof gives way because you have four firemen on the array, something like that. There's a way to regulate this in a safe manner and make sure that, and when they fill out these forms, and we basically took their IC, they're essentially like Commerce Commission forms that were used by utility, and we co-opted them. But basically, everything's out front, and if there's a problem with the array, the city will know who the owner is, who installed it, who to call in an emergency, in case the person who puts up the arrays in Florida, and there's a real problem, you have other people in contact. On the compensation size, it basically outlines to the customer so that he knows in advance what he'll get reimbursed from the city and what he won't. But the trick is, is you want to be fair to everybody, so you want it where if he's causing you to avoid a cost, the person, the man or woman gets the money, but the city, if they put up the arrays, the city still has fixed costs that aren't going to go away, you're still going to be paying insurance, you've got bucket trucks, you've got transformers that are on standby. So that's why Sue's gone this route of, we're going to charge them the full rate, and then credit back what the IMEA would provide, which is something that's been pretty well being used, and we've talked to some vendors, and they're comfortable with it. The vendors always want you to give more and more to make it more profitable. But we gave these two quick handouts here of what a net metering policy is, it kind of covers the, what your goals are, and, you know, how you're trying to help, you know, let the customer know what's going on, and then let the city know, and the other one is invisible, you fill in fixed costs, kind of outline why you need to make sure you collect enough revenues to make the city whole. And then on the net metering policy that she's got, we basically had 20 towns that came together, and they put this boilerplate thing where you can plug in city names, or you can customize it to your city conditions, and it basically provides ways of compensating the customer of making sure they filed everything right, and make sure the city feels a safer way.
One of the things I pointed out to the resident that's interested though, is ICC and ComEd, or ComEd going back and forth. Some of the people, like our resident that's interested, is looking at grants to help make this happen, and those grants may go away depending on the outcome of this ICC ComEd fight. I did notify the resident that that is a possibility, but I still think if this is the first bite we've got, it'd still be good to get it on the books so that we're prepared, you know, for others. Because I've heard of at least another commercial enterprise that has been looking at possible solar energies.
Here, Tam.
Essentially, the state legislature passed a law, they call it the Future Energy Jobs Act, and it collects money from the AMRAH and ComEd admin American customers to pay for these arrays, for the incentives. It doesn't collect money from co-ops, or one of the investor utilities, the municipals. So ComEd is saying, under the definitions of the law, this should not apply to the municipals. And we're basically neutral on it, because we're not being charged with a fee, each time has their own public on it. So it basically, the Commerce Commission ruled, administrative law judge said it does not apply to municipals. The full commission, which is like their city council, said, yeah, it does, and then they went back for a rehearing, ComEd protested, and they said, no, it doesn't. So now ComEd has a certain number of days to take it to the appellate judge and get a ruling, and if it's not a return at stance, then the incentives will flow. But if the judge says something different, then they're gone to provide remedy.
To do a solar in this town, are they subject to zoning laws?
Yeah, it's a good question, I don't know what the county's laws are, we don't have zoning here. So it would be under the county's purview. I'm not sure what their laws are for solar.
I'm not sure what you're being handed.
You know, they might have some things for like height, because I know they do for wind turbines, but it also includes other energy, so, you know, they might have things like heights up there, those kinds of things, but I don't really, I'd have to get a copy of their ordinance.
What is the distribution system utilization fee?
That's something we put in there, and it's up to the city whether they want to do it or not.
Is it, what is it?
What's basically the fee where, if you have something like BHMB study in your system, it basically says, hey, we need a certain amount of money per customer, a certain size, to make sure we're covering all of our fixed costs, and that's just to make sure that you don't lose customers to solar, and then the remaining people have to get a rate increase, and it protects everybody and...
Yeah, if we get too many or something, and we're crediting a bunch back, the others are going to subsidize it.
And it's up to the city if they want to put zero, or 100 bucks, or, you know, whatever. A lot of people do it by KW, so it's its size, if the customer is bigger, it goes up.
And you said the credits go away after 12 months, is it?
That's just when you bank it, you get credit every month no matter what. That's if you create more power than you're using.
Right.
That gets banked per year.
So do you lose it on the fiscal year, or do you lose each month as it rolls across?
No, it would be per year, calendar or fiscal year. Once a year, you would lose it.
And that's more, also if they terminate, if they leave town, then it goes away. But that's a way to keep them from oversizing it, and, you know, basically we want them to buy it in subsidies or a rate.
I was just thinking, if you got credit on, say, October, and if we rolled over in November, you lose your October credit in November, see what I'm saying?
Well, no, 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 it's not, no, because you'll have a monthly credit, and then the year credit, I mean, you can have a thousand on there, and I'll only be using 100 a month, so I don't see losing it per se unless you're looking for a thousand kilowatt credit or something. I know that I talked to the communities that adopted it, they've never seen a residential solar make more than what they need.
It can get expensive if you put a sizable array up. We've got one, we've got three people in our office that are looking in, one of them will cost you $25,000 to put up an array, so it's something, you need to get incentive to put the money up front, so you have to have, you have to have spare money or be able to take a bank loan for a year, because a lot of the credits come back on your income taxes and things like that.
This is probably a stupid question. Now, see, do you buy solar arrays out in the middle of a field? If somebody puts a solar array in the middle of town, what happens if your neighbor's trees are blocking it? Is that, is there a problem with shadows, or?
We've...
I don't know how solar works, I'm just asking.
I'm not a lawyer, it can use direct sunlight. If you, well, we've heard, one of the guys in our office, who's also not a lawyer, says, his solar vendor said, you've got the right to sunlight on your property, but I've talked to other people that said, hey, your trees are there, and they put a solar behind it, you know, so... I'm not a attorney, but...
So this may not be feasible for some people?
My mom's paying $20 a year, and there's no way she could put a solar panel on her house, and she's 89.
Thinking about trees, as I found out, and maybe joke quickly on this, but it's, if there's a tree next to your property, and that thing, they got a lint tank over on your property, you can go clear back to the base of the tree.
Well, I'm...
Well, over your property line.
Over your property line. Over your property line, now go clear back to the tree.
No, I wouldn't do that.
No.
You know, my satellite signal goes away because, when the trees bloom, because they block the signal, and I didn't know how to do it with solar panels.
Solar will still make energy, even if shaded, it's just not going to make as much.
Well, I thought what I would do is look at, you know, give you the rates to look at, like, you know, obviously what we're charging, what we're being charged, so you can at least look at some numbers, bring it back for potential, you know, adoption, maybe next time. But I brought Mike here because he's the expert, as I'm being educated and...
Pretty complicated.
Tough questions you're going to ask Mike, yeah, it's very complicated.
He changes every month too, because he keeps changing the rules.
All right, well, thank you.
All right, well, thank you, Mike.
If you need anything, please tell Sue when the law will be updated.
Okay, thank you all so much.
Number two is a discussion regarding the apartments on Main Street, we've already talked to Mr. Kradoff about that. We'll just skip that one.
Making motion to approve ordinance 1007, ordinance pending an agreement with Area Disposal.
I'll second it. Discussion.
Okay, as I stated in my memo, the original contract with Area called for 1,131 accounts. They based their pricing on that number. As we narrowed things down, we started finding multifamily, you know, we thought we're duplexes and we're triplexes, they ended up being sheds or garages. The biggest surprise was we have over 100 vacant homes. So that number ultimately, as we narrowed down over these last couple of weeks, is down to 797. This has happened twice in Rantoul, once in Lincoln, so we're not the first ones to get the number wrong. I would say that Area has worked very well to try to resolve the issue with the least disruption to the residents. What they're recommending are a number of changes that don't affect the price, don't affect the weekly service. They affect the city, but ultimately, they want to be in farmer's safety for the long haul. And so what they're looking at is trying to recoup their investment from the business perspective with the least disruption to everyone. So what they're proposing is, I'll just walk through all of them. The first one is just, in the original contract, they called for curbside pickup. Well, obviously, we can't do that on Main Street, so the first amendment is to put it actually in the contract that they're going to do in the alley, because they don't, they're not going to do the alleys elsewhere in the city, so this is very specific to Main Street, that's the first recommended change. The next one is, in the contract, it's 7:00 AM, they want it 6:00 AM because they can get it out much faster. I didn't think that was a general issue, I'm used to, you know, I think most cities do this at 6:00 AM. The only loss that the residents are going to experience is going from two bulk waste pickups a year to one. pickups a year to one. We were gonna have one in the spring and one in the fall, but dropped one, so they'll still have the spring. The other, the prices all remain the same, but instead of a five-year, they're asking for seven years with a two-year option, so nine total. If you add it up, it's still gonna be only just over $17 a month in nine years. So, it's only going up 12% in the first seven, 15% over nine if we do the last two years option. So, no changes in the rates, just asking, they want, they're investing in a truck, they've invested all the totes, they just want to be here for the long haul, trying to recoup their money. And then obviously, the change in, from 1131 to 797. So, those are the substantive changes. The only other one that really hurts the city is the franchise fee. If we kept going with the numbers that we had, we would owe them 4,001. All they're saying is make these minor changes, and when you know franchise fee, so we, the city loses 7,000 a year, is what I estimated the franchise fee would be. So, obviously, it's very disappointing on my behalf that, you know, I got the numbers wrong. You know, they felt like it wasn't, like I said, with, you know, Rantoul, like it wasn't unusual, but that doesn't make me feel any better. But I was very surprised by the vacancies, which is a whole nother stock project concern, but I do think this is the least disruptive to the citizens, but it's still disappointing.
This happened in Lincoln and Rantoul, they didn't feel obligated to tell us, hey, be careful with your numbers and check your numbers out?
I did state that, I actually did state that in a conversation, but I'm not one to blame other people. I always take responsibility for my actions and so, I mean, you know, I should drill down a little better, but no, they did not say anything.
These terms are negotiable?
No.
Franchise fee is not negotiable, then what then?
No, I mean, if you don't.
If you really break it down, I mean, the amount of people, 300 times $15, even like over a year's time, it's like 33, I mean, it's a lot, it's a lot of money. So, just them taking these few things away seems like the better deal. I mean, you know, it's unfortunate, I don't know.
Well, it's very minimal compared to the $4,000 a month that the city has to pay.
Right.
What would it cost us to back out of this altogether?
Uh, it's a contract.
You know, I had.
I gotta ask.
Yeah.
You know, we'd be looking at a whole variety of damage factors, quite frankly, Scott. Issues such as what kind of costs have they already incurred? Would we, would they say, hey, wait a minute, we had to buy this, we're gonna buy that, and we weren't gonna buy it otherwise? We're gonna have to take into account things like lost profits possibly over a number of years.
No, the, here's, here's where, here's where I would, the, the once-a-year pickup for the bulk waste, that's fine. The, the six-foot, that's fine, unless I put okay.
Main Street allies?
Main Street allies, that's fine. The five, the, the two, the two-year extension, if they're doing a great job, there's no reason you wouldn't put them back in, that's up to them. They don't, if they're doing a good job, they don't need guaranteed two more years. If they're doing a horrible job, you want to be able to get rid of them.
I understand, but let me, let me put it to you this way. They don't have to do anything, and we could have to pay them about 5,000 a month.
Yeah.
So, what I'm saying is, I think they have done a great job in trying to resolve the issue with the least disruption.
And the franchise deal, franchise fee was one of the selling points on this.
Well, we talked about it, we talked recycling was the whole start.
Well, I know, but when we won recycling, we still kept going.
Yeah.
So, I would say if they left, if they let the time alone to pay the franchise fee, I'd be happy with the rest of it. And if they do a good job over the next five years, there's no reason the next council won't keep them on.
Say that again, I'm confused.
The extend, extending the contract, right now, the contract is.
Three plus two, five years.
Three plus two.
Got it.
They want five plus.
What'd you say about the franchise fee?
Oh, well, the franchise fee, they're not gonna pay that, that's what they want out, but they want out of the 5% franchise fee.
Right.
That's correct.
I said that was, for, at least for me, that was one of the selling points I'm having this.
I misunderstood.
Was that we were going, we were going, we were going to collect a little money on this to help the city out. Now, we're losing it. And I'm saying, as far as the time of the contract goes, if they're doing a stellar job in five, in three or five years, why wouldn't the next council keep them on? But if they're doing a horrible job, you want to be able to get rid of them.
I don't think there's.
No, I don't think anybody thinks they're doing a horrible job, because they have a lot of compliments. But I don't think that, the point is that they made a large investment.
I understand that.
In the community, they're trying to get their pay back without asking to increase prices.
What happens if we lose another 100, 100 residents, then they're gonna want it?
Well, what if we gain another? What he said was, based on this number, the contract allows for month-to-month fluctuations of, you know, for, you know, to 20 to 50, I don't see that happening, but, you know, with rentals and whatnot, that this number would allow for that.
I mean, the reality is, they instantly gained half this town's business, at least when they took this contract. So, I mean, they're ahead, they're ahead already over where they were.
But they also invested a lot of money.
And they cut their prices down in half from what they were charging their current customers.
Maybe, maybe what we need to ask residents to do is to pay the difference, raise the rate to $18.
No, I don't like that. You know, I don't, I, I don't blame you for this. I, I think that, you know, maybe past administration should have known a little bit about how many vacancies we had and had some notes or something about that. I mean, the fact that your predecessor had nothing to show for, that we had 100 vacant homes in this town, I would not put that on you. So, you know, just from my perspective, I wouldn't say this was your fault, because this happened within the first like 30 to 45 vacant years or years. So, you know, I don't blame you on this. I think you're doing a lot of good things for our town.
This town's over a bunch of rental properties, and that's part of the problem, there isn't rental property, right? We've got some landlords, our group mountain now, they're leaving the countryside, they don't live here in town, so I don't think they have any town pride or anything, so.
And again, this is not unusual. Like I said, Rantoul, they got an amendment and then they had to go back and do it a second time because their numbers were wrong, you know, that they kept tweaking. Well, I mean, we learned so much going through this process. I mean, it's good to bring this stuff to life, though, and what we now know. We learned a lot about the accounts to actually go through, like, almost house by house.
There was a mistake made, not feel they're grabbing for the gold, that's why it has to be negotiable.
I don't think they're grabbing for the gold, I think they're losing money and it's gonna take them longer to recoup.
All right.
That's right.
Trying to be reasonable.
Yes. The way it was expressed to me is, they want to be here for the long haul and so they're.
And I don't see these numbers change as far as, what the citizens have to pay, I think that's crazy, we already made a commitment to them with that. Any other discussion on this? Call it.
Testory?
No.
Coffee?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Uh, section four will be the other items, City Managers' report.
Okay, I got some very important things to say, some upcoming things. Okay, so, in your newsletter, it's going to be a recycling calendar on the half side of the newsletter. This next week, because of Memorial Day, garbage pickup will be Friday. Probably should have, you know, experienced that in the past, but definitely now, the holidays are always one day later. I think I notified all of you, we had some additional issues at the pool. The concrete was literally dissolving like paper, and so they had to take out two bigger sections to fix it. After talking with Joe Monk and the contractors, the official opening day was June 1st. So, instead of Monday, Memorial Day will be Friday, so, a little bit, because it's gonna take time, we're gonna finish by tomorrow, excuse me, then you have to fill it, treat it, you know, so we needed, we need that time to make sure. And then if it rains, it's gonna take longer than rain. So, but, it's got new lockers, we repainted some areas, worked on the floor, so it'll be good for the season. I'm gonna be open there.
The wall looks good, they did a good job on this.
Doesn't, I haven't driven by there yet.
They were painting over where they, they had fixed.
Okay, good. Pickup, and then hydrant flushing will be the week of June 4th. We, we don't know why we've been experiencing discolored water, usually it's because of a large leak or something. Can't find anything. Calvin believes that if we do hydrant flushing like we do every year, that it'll be really bad during the hydrant flushing, but then it should, you know, maybe settle.
It's only bad for, you know, just a few hours, and it was crystal clear getting in.
But then we had some complaints sparring from the west side, so, I don't know. But we're gonna do hydrant flushing June 4th, I will be pushing out that information. Code red is in the process, they're building the database right now, so I'm hopeful we'll get that running in the next couple of weeks. But those are the big ones, late day pickup, Memorial Day week, pool opening June 1st, and hydrant flushing June 4th.
I have one thing on that. I can't remember what it was now. Anyway, all right, number.
So, the pool's good for three months, then after this, and then we do.
Yeah, so we can discuss, do we want to do major repairs? And I would like to, I'm gonna try to hit that to maybe by the end of June, or we can actually start stepping it out in July.
I was just thinking about, thinking to myself, if we're, if we're opening, not on Memorial Day, but Friday after, I wonder if we shouldn't have a celebration, have a grand, grand opening, more people can come in and see the pool. Or a grand reopening, maybe.
For what?
For what reason?
We're not doing anything, it doesn't really look so much bad. This fall, right? Not, not blowing out, but I could see definitely a big celebration next year.
Bring a can of cheese, everybody, and a can of cheese or something.
Hey, I like that idea, that's a good idea, Lawrence.
Well, they used to do that, they used to do that.
Yeah. I'm just saying, it's, it's, people are used to opening on Memorial Day, it's gonna be a little bit late, so maybe we should get people sent in to come out to the pool.
It's been late in the past two years.
It's not even grand time to have a pool, but hoping a month and a half later. But I'm just happy that they caught the really bad areas and we can.
I know what I had for you, I'll see.
Yes.
Um, how are the people going to register for the?
Well, we'll be doing probably like a flyer with a sign up. There's also gonna be an online sign up that we're gonna promote, so it'll be both. They can do it by paper and then online, we'll be pushing that out as soon as the database is ready and we'll ready to move forward.
Okay.
Can't think of anything else.
Move that we adjourned.
Second here.
Call it.
Coffee?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Testory?